It says connection.
Does it?
Yes.
Any additional sewer easement connecting the existing sewer easement to residential property?
With all costs of connection.
With the exact location of the town. And all costs of residence of Pace Drive.
Not all costs. All costs of connection.
But if you don't connect the easement, you connect with the sewer.
Is that what you're grabbing?
Yeah. This is the, this is the.
Well, you guys do whatever.
Alright guys, we better, yeah, we better get on the record.
Alright. Scott Fisher's not gonna be here.
I'm just saying, that's, um. He needs one second.
I'll, I'll.
Hey guys. George, 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 we're going on the record.
Scott Fisher's not gonna be here. He's at that Mountain Avenue Culver, it's not gonna work till dark because of the rain tomorrow.
Okay.
So. I don't think it matters.
Okay. Whatever you guys want. Rob, Rob preferred it was out, what did you say now?
Okay, well.
Yeah. It's alright. You're outside?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening everybody, the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one work session of the White Claw Planning Board is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. A copy of said annual schedule has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. A copy's been filed to the township clerk, the record, the Ridgwood News, and the North Jersey Herald and News. All newspapers with general circulation throughout the township of White Claw. At least forty-eight hours prior to this meeting, the agenda thereof was similarly posted, filed, and mailed to said newspapers. Members of the public are welcome to be present at this meeting, however, in accordance with Section seven A of the Open Public Meetings Act, participation on the part of the public at this meeting will not be entertained. I think that's, that's all I have to read, right, now?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay, can we have a roll call? Marney, please.
Ms. Conlin?
Here.
Mr. Sevita?
Here.
Mr. Homiechak?
Here.
Mr. Fisher? Mr. Seetma?
Here.
Mr. Wunstra?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Ms. Bogdansky?
Here.
Mr. Purbin?
Here.
Mayor Rubenstein? Chairman Fortunato?
Here. Well, welcome back, everybody. Glad we're here.
Chairman, for the record, Scott Fisher is here because he's working on the Mountain Avenue Culver, and they're pushing it till dark because of the rain tomorrow, so I doubt he will make it here tonight. That's, that's why he's not here.
Okay.
He texted me about a half hour ago.
Thanks, Mr. Boonstru.
Thank you.
Okay, first item of business is the approval of the March tenth, two thousand twenty-one work session regular business minutes. Um, starting with the work session minutes. Anybody have any comments or changes on those? Looked okay to me. Nothing? And, um, you can vote on them at the same time. As regard to the regular business minutes, does anybody have any comments or changes on those? If not, can I have a, a motion to approve both the work session and business, regular business minutes from March tenth, two thousand twenty-one?
Motion to approve the public and work session minutes from March tenth, as before you.
Second.
Third.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sevita?
Yes.
Mr. Homiechak?
Yes.
Mr. Seetma?
Yes.
Mr. Wunstra?
Yes.
Ms. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Purbin?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the resolution, the attachment of White Claw Maple Lake Minor Subdivision Resolution. This was approved at the last meeting, and, um, Mr. Hanley had prepared a resolution. I did get a call from, uh, Mr. Dan Landell, the township attorney, who had requested, um, only within the last, actually, hour, hour and a half, a couple of other additional changes to the, um, the resolution. I will read those into the record. Um, on this, paragraph thirteen, on the third line where it says pace, drive, residence, Mr. Landell had, uh, requested that be changed to applicant. And then farther down in paragraph thirteen, um, in the last line, the, where it says the sanitary sewer, it, he is asking that existing be put between the and sanitary, so it'd be the existing sanitary sewer. And, in, farther down the same page, uh, below paragraph two, where it says be it further resolved, that first line, Mr. Landell had requested it, so it reads now, be it further resolved that the residents of Pace Drive may file the necessary application to amend the plan. He'd asked that residents of Pace Drive may file the necessary application to amend the plan, be removed, and replaced with applicant, may amend the plan.
And just a point of clarification, the applicant is the township.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, I mean, you could put that in if you want to clarify that, too.
Well, I, I mentioned the applicant in the, uh, whereas clauses.
Okay. And then we're gonna leave that other part alone, then? consensus? Rudy, you're fine with that?
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the last line of that would cost to be borne by residents of Pace Drive?
Yes.
That should be removed.
Okay, well, I, I, the reason I brought that up is because I did speak to Mr. Landell. Mr. Landell has requested that be removed. The attorney for the board, Mr. Hanley, has a different opinion of that. Do you want to explain your, your position on that, Mr. Hanley?
Oh, yes. Basically, I, I change it to with all costs of connection to be borne by, by the residents. Uh, and that's because, uh, that's what was stated at the meeting.
Yeah.
And, basically, I was under the impression that they were gonna have to file an application to hook up to the easement connection, but the town is gonna do that, so they, they're not gonna pay for that, but the actual connection, uh, and, and I think the, the neighbors who were there, no, no one objected to it, a couple of them did actually agree to. It would be at their cost.
I, I don't, I don't. So, I, I also spoke to Mr. Landell, um, this eve, this evening, just fifteen minutes ago regarding this. And, uh, I understand the point, I think the intent here is to be able to, to allow flexibility in the township to be able to have sanitary sewer easement run across that property to connect to the existing sanitary sewer to serve, I can't do this, to serve, to serve the, um, the neighborhood Pace Drive and the surrounding neighborhood. And, uh, that could happen whether it be a privately funded sewer extension or a publicly funded sewer extension like we've had, or a public-private partnership sewer extension. So I think the intent is to be able to access that easement to serve the municipal sewer system and expanding the municipal sewer system into the other neighborhoods. So, it's, the relevance of who's paying for it, I don't think is the point. I think the point is, we want to be able, the township as the applicant wants to have the flexibility to be able to install a sewer easement to serve the, the neighborhood and the basin.
I don't feel that strongly about it, but it was, it was brought out by the chairman that it would be at their cost, and it was agreed to by at least some of the neighbors.
Right, and that was because, that was because the applicant, the person who called in, was, was interested in, in pursuing a privately funded sewer extension potentially, and wanted to be able to go through it. Certainly, the construction and all that would, in fact, if they wanted to do that, sure. But I, I think the intent of Mr. Wunstra's comment was to be able to allow the township the future flexibility to install a sewer easement across that property, whether it be for the township's purpose or a privately funded purpose, um, I think that's the relevance.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think this prevents the township from making the, um, uh, the private homeowners pay for it. I think what Mr. Landell had indicated to me was, he thought it was a possible, possible that maybe the county would pay for it at a future time, and he, he would prefer if the language wasn't in there, so it didn't necessarily bind anybody at this point.
Yeah, and as. I, I would agree with Mark. Kevin, I understand your point and, and what the testimony was, but, um, having participated in some of the, and organizing some of these sewer projects, um, it would be better to have more flexibility as to who funds it and not just in this resolution limit it to the residents, um, because there are sources of funding available. And, um, and it's, uh, it, it's a project by project, um, case as, so where the funding comes from.
Okay. I have, I have no problem one way or the other.
You, you were right to put it in there, that was part of the testimony.
No, it's, 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 it's fine, but, um, I, I think we'll be guided by, uh, by Rob Landell. And as someone who's participated in putting these together, I, I kinda agree with what Mark is saying.
Okay, so the other, the, the final amendment would be the, the last phrase, with all costs to be borne by the residents of Pace Drive, removed from that section.
Yeah, that, that was actually changed to, yeah, with all costs of connection to be borne by the residents of Pace Drive.
Oh, okay, that's the one I had, didn't have it.
I'll eliminate that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
If I may, uh, point out just a couple of grammaticals on, uh, paragraph, page one, I'm sorry, page two, number three. The owner will be required to obtain necessary approvals, comma, if and when it decides to develop that parcel. So, uh, if and when, comma, number three, Paul Kuvet appeared on behalf of the, missing T on the applicant.
Where was the first change you mentioned, Mark?
Just, um, the owner will be required to obtain necessary approvals, comma, if and when, comma, it decides to develop that parcel.
What paragraph is that?
Number three. Number two, I'm sorry.
Oh, two, okay.
Oh, wait a minute. I gotta, I gotta, I gotta have to renumber them, there's two threes.
Oh, okay, okay.
So then, then the next one is number four. They oughta be renumbered.
Okay. So, Mr. Hanley, you'll just renumber those?
No problem.
Right? Was there any other changes, Mark?
No, I did confirm, um, the lot numbers as, uh, as represented in the resolution are, are in agreement with my report, and it does suggest that it's up to the tax assessor to renumber the lots as need be, so I agree with that.
Okay, anybody else have anything else? Kevin, you have noted all those changes, right?
I, I got them right here.
Okay, great, so subject to those changes, um, can I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sevita?
Yes.
Mr. Homiechak?
Yes.
Mr. Seetma?
Yes.
Mr. Wunstra?
Yes.
Mr. Purbin?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is for completeness, which is the Gary Cale matter, who some of us are very familiar with already, two twenty-five Ann Houghton Avenue. Um, for simplicity's sake, I'd like to put that to the end of the agenda for, uh, during the work session, uh, because there's a number of issues we're gonna have to deal with on that. And just go to the completeness on the other two, and then we'll circle back to that, Mr. Whitaker, okay? Um, the, the item on for completeness review, and if, if deemed complete for public hearing tonight, the first matter is Mark DiLorenzo, three fifty-nine Ruwett Farm Road. The applicant seeking to move soil in excess of a hundred cubic yards to install an in-ground pool. Uh, Mark, you prepared a memo on that, correct?
Yes.
Could you just bring us through that, please?
Sure. So, um, this is three fifty-nine Ruwett Farm Road, block four twenty-nine, lot forty-one, single-family home in the R I twenty-five zone. Um, the applicant submitted application for the demolition, uh, full-time construction details prepared by Alvin and Otter Ford, uh, last revised, three one forty-one. Uh, the applicant proposed to improve the property by constructing an in-ground swimming pool and cabana, requiring the regrading of the property, resulting in a total movement in excess of a hundred cubic yards, therefore requiring plenty of board approval. Um, the plan proposed to remove two trees from the property. There is a proposed tier retaining wall along the northwesterly property line and a single retaining wall along the eastward property line. And, uh, basically, those walls are needed to be able to effectively grade the property. It seems like the property slopes from right to left, they want to flatten it out by cutting out the right and filling in the left. The wall setbacks proposed are conforming with our code. Um, my recommendation is, as, uh, the code requires, all retaining walls in excess of two feet in height require design calculations by a new jersey licensed engineer. Uh, there's approximately two hundred thirty cubic yards of soil proposed to be removed from the site. Stormwater design calculations have been included, and, uh, the plant, on the plans, will meet satisfied management requirements. Burton County Soil Conservation Application may be required, and, uh, stability calcs for the retaining wall must be submitted for review and approval prior to issuing issuance of any construction permits, unless the walls over two feet in height. Based on what I saw in the review, uh, I think, except just the planning board would, uh, feel comfortable doing the application complete in a hearing tonight, uh, in public hearing.
Thanks, Mr. DeGennaro. So, Mr. DeGennaro. Clarification, the retained walls are not over two feet?
I doubt, there's, the retaining walls, all retaining walls over two feet require design calculations by an engineer and, and a subsequent, uh, prior review of those calcs before permitting.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have, you don't have them now?
I don't have them yet.
But prior to a permit being issued, if this is approved, you, you would be getting those?
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. DeGennaro is recommending it be deemed complete and heard later on this evening. Does anybody have any comments or objections to that? I don't. If not, can I have a motion to deem this matter complete?
Motion to deem this matter complete, put on the agenda. I'll second that.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sevita?
Yes.
Mr. Homiechak?
Yeah.
Mr. Seetma?
Yes.
Mr. Purbin?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Bogdansky?
Yes.
Mr. Purbin?
Yes.
Can I call you ready?
Yeah.
I think you missed me. That's okay.
Mr. Wunstra?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes.
The man, he's cutting off my oxygen.
Okay, and the second matter on for completeness, um, is the Maggie Muller matter, four seventy-eight Ellis Place. This is a applicant seeking approval to install a six-foot-high solid fence on a corner lot with two front yards. Uh, Mr. DeGennaro, I know you prepared a memo on that, this one as well, can you bring us through that, please?
Sure. Four seventy-eight Ellis Place, block three forty-seven, lot thirteen, single-family home in the R I twenty-five zone. The applicant is preparing to placing a privacy fence located within the front yard setback of the property located that runs on Ellis Place and James Way. If, uh, the sections of the code is customary for, um, a six-foot fence that's solid in the front yard. We thought planning board, uh, on site plan, tighter fences located in rear yards, inside, uh, rear or side yard should not exceed six feet above normal grade. This is a fence in the front yard, so it's, it exceeds four feet, it's more than fifty, it's solid, so it's, uh, it requires the board approval. Site distance, uh, on a corner lot may, um, may not be closer, the fence can't be closer than twenty-five feet to the intersection. This one clearly is, is beyond that. There's plantings, it appears that there's, uh, plantings that exist, shrubbery that exists along the James Way property line, and the fence is supposed to be located behind the, the existing shrubbery. So there is no landscape being shown, it's, it's the ordinance requires plantings to be placed in front of a fence when these type of fences are being proposed, but it seems to me that what the applicant was presenting is that the fence will be located, and it will, behind the shrubs, and it will utilize the existing shrubs as the, as they're planted. And I understand they sent a, an email depicting the type of fence, that it looks to be, um, a solid, I recall seeing the color for it, I think it's a solid white fence.
I took copies on everyone's table tonight.
Yeah, I just don't know if it's white or if it's that, uh, beige-ish, off-white color.
I believe it's white, but.
We can get testimony on that. There's a second option, too, on the next page, which has a, uh, opening at the top.
Gladys.
Gladys, yeah. Is it your recommendation, um, Mr. DeGennaro, that this matter be deemed complete for hearing later this evening?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any comments, questions, before we vote on this? No?
Not.
Okay, can I have a, can I have a motion to deem this matter complete?
Motion to deem four seventy-eight Ellis Place complete. Second.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Sevita?
Yes.
Mr. Homiechak?
Yeah.
Mr. Seetma?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yep.
Ms. Bogdansky?
Yeah.
Mr. Wunstra?
Yes.
Mr. Purbin?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes. Okay, and circling back to the Gary Cale matter, two twenty-five Ann Houghton Avenue. This matter's listed for completeness this evening. Completeness is probably really not the appropriate, um, appropriate for this at the moment. Um, just by way of background, because we have, we have some new board members on. This matter was, um, there was a previous matter brought by Mr. Cale, uh, well over a year ago, and it also involved soil movement. Mr. Cale essentially moved to, it, well in excess of a hundred cubic yards, in fact, I think in excess of seven or eight hundred cubic yards, onto his property with, prior to getting any permits, prior to coming before this board, to get approval to do so. And he also did substantial other work there, and when he was cited, or Mr. DeGennaro brought this to atten, his attention, he brought the, he did bring an application. After several hearings, that application was denied in June of two thousand twenty. There is, at the time that the, um, the application was denied, there were two resolutions signed. One, one that was, the first resolution denied the application. The second one, based upon Mr. Whitaker's request, who's the applicant's attorney, I'll just read parts of it into the record. Mr. Whitaker stated, uh, in, in the second resolution, that the applicant, Mr. Cale, would like to install a swimming pool on the property. So, just before we get there, so that, that, we denied the soil movement application. Because the soil was already on site, the remedy would have been for Mr. Cale to remove all the soil that was there. Okay? Mr. Whitaker, on his behalf, asked for a stay of the removal. And the board granted a stay for sixty days, um, based on a representation by Mr. Whitaker that his client wanted to put a pool in the back, and that would be, and that he would be submitting a second application for permission to put a pool in. And the result, if, if that were granted, it would have required a removal of either all or substantial part of that soil. And, um, that, so, reading it to the record, the, the resolution, Mr. Whitaker stated the applicant would like to install a swimming pool on the property. If allowed, the applicant may be required to remove the soil that had been previously imported. Mr. Purbin, who was, uh, acting chair on that meeting, stated that it appears that the proposal is substantially different, meaning the pool, an application to put a pool in, from the original application, which was for soil movement only. He, Mr. Purbin, asked that the board could withhold on enforcement of the resolution for sixty days to allow the applicant to submit a new application as proposed in Mr. Whitaker's letter. In other words, an application to put a pool in. Mr. Uh, Board Attorney Hanley stated that since the memorializing resolution denying the soil movement application had been adopted, any enforcement of the denial would be handled by the building cards, building department's code enforcement officer. Mr. Hanley added that as a matter of courtesy, the board can request the building department withhold enforcement for sixty days to allow the applicant to file a new application with the building department. Township engineer DeGennaro stated that the board's denial of the soil movement application creates a situation whereby the site, as it currently exists, is not lawful. As such, submitting an application for permits to construct a swimming pool would result in denial, and the matter would be referred back to the planning board for a soil movement application, grading, reconstruction of a retaining wall and pool installation. Mr. DeGennaro also stated that the project proposed in the letter, meaning a new pool, would constitute a substantial change from the application that was denied, which was for soil movement only. Mr. Whitaker asked for clarification on what actions will be taken if his client decides not to submit an application for construction of a pool. Mr. DeGennaro stated that construction enforcement would affect the terms of the denial, which would entail, among other things, a removal of the soil. Mr. Whitaker said he will advise his client of his options as discussed this evening. And the board did approve that. The board approved the withholding enforcement for sixty days, and that was ten months ago. Under the circumstances with COVID and all, I, I think the board has been very lenient in, in extending that and, and not seeking enforcement of that to this point. Um, I just wanted to bring the other members of the, the new members of the board up to speed on what had happened on that. This is a new application, and if we do decide to hear it, um, everybody who's here now would be able to hear it because it's a new application. But, Mr. Hanley, let me throw this over to you, and could you just explain to the board what, because we have an application here which is for soil movement, okay? What, what the criteria would be for the board hearing this, considering we denied a prior soil movement application?
Mr. Chairman, um, the legal concept here is called res judicata. Uh, that means the thing has been adjudicated. It comes about when we have the same parties, we, we have the same parties here. Mr. Cale is the applicant in both parties. In the first application, there was an adjudication on the merits, there was, it was a denial. The next res judicata comes about, the third thing, there was no substantial change in the second application. And that also refers to the conditions surrounding the property. So, it's the application itself, uh, and whether there's a substantial change in conditions surrounding the property in the second application. Whether there is a substantial change to an application, it, it's, it's, well, let's put it this way. It's a sort of generalized concept, okay? What is a substantial change? When you apply that general concept, the way the courts apply it, it's, it's specific to the facts of the case. All right? And in this case, the judge doesn't hear it, the board's gonna hear it. And the, the board has to make a determination, uh, whether the second application is substantially different from the previous application. If it is, then the applicant can go forward. If it isn't, if you determine it's not substantially different, uh, it's not a substantial change, then res judicata covers it and the denial stays in. So they can't go forward with the second application.
So just for clarification, that would be, as you understand the law, the decision of the board as to whether they deem it a substantial, substantially different application or not?
Right, and it would be subject to whatever, if, if there was a negative decision by the board, the applicant would have a right to appeal it.
Now, um, I mean, this is the work session, and we'll, we'll certainly give Mr. Whitaker an opportunity to speak when, uh, the regular session is in, is going. Did, um, I understand Mr. Whitaker did, I think he did submit an email, did he, can you, uh, did he submit anything additional and supportive as a, his position that this is a substantially different application?
I was copied on an email from, I think it was, let's see here. I was copied on an email from, uh, Mr. Whitaker to, uh, Mark DeGennaro, and Mr. Whitaker said, it's my position that res judicata does not apply because there is a significant difference in the application from, this application from the prior application. I have been advised that the prior application proposed one hundred fifty cubic yards of export and one hundred fifty cubic yards of import as replacement. In this instance, the application is proposing four hundred twenty cubic yards of export and nine hundred seventy-eight cubic yards of import. And, and basically, uh, that's a. yards of import. And basically, that's his, he said, there is a disparity in what is now being proposed to what was originally denied. And Mr. Whitaker takes the position that res judicata does not apply, because there is a substantial change in the application itself.
Okay. And just, just to get some clarification, Mr. DeGenero, I understand, having spoken to you previously, in fact, Mr. Cale did submit to your office an application for, to install a pool, is that correct?
Yes.
When was that, when was that application submitted?
Originally, I believe, the application was submitted August, September. And I told him I couldn't accept it, because we needed a septic approval first. So, he had to give me a septic redesign, because the septic had to be moved. So, then, once the septic got approved, the application came to me probably in December of 2020. But I think because of conversations I had with Mr. Whitaker about being able to get on agendas and scheduling and whatnot, we were probably looking to the February meeting, if I'm not mistaken. So, when I did the review for anticipation of the February meeting, I determined, or I discovered that, that there was a potential variance condition that would also need to be addressed in, in the application and for purposes of notice and whatnot, and I brought that to the applicant's attention.
And what was the variance that was required under the application that was submitted?
I recall it was accessory lot, accessory structure lot coverage, which is under our ordinance, it's the accessory lot coverage is, maximum permit is 5%. And I believe that application exceeded that, the pool application exceeded that, because there's a large detached garage as part of that property. So, detached garages, pools, sheds, cabanas, open decks, all count as accessory structure.
And that, that application never came before us? It was withdrawn?
At, at the last minute, it was withdrawn, because I guess there was some apprehension regarding the variance condition that the applicant was unaware of.
Okay. And then, this, this current application was submitted thereafter?
Yes. This is the most recent.
Okay. And with regard to, well, I, I think it's fair that we can hear from Mr. Whitaker at the, the regular business meeting. I, I don't know at this point, in, in just having discussed this with Mr. Hanley, this is going to have to be a board decision in, in reviewing Mr. Whitaker's email. I, I personally, at this point, don't know if we have enough information to make a decision as to whether or not this is, in fact, a substantially new application or not, and whether the board should, in fact, hear it. I think it would be fair to hear from Mr. Whitaker, and perhaps he wants to supplement with what he, what he's given Mr. Hanley with regard to that position. Obviously, if we determine that this is not a new application, then, then we won't even hear it. So, at this point, I think, because we have time limitations for deeming this complete or not, correct, Mark?
Yes.
So, I think at this point, we should deem this matter incomplete, so that we don't run into any time problems. And then, we can make a decision whether later this evening or at the next meeting as to whether or not this is, in fact, a substantially new application or not. Does that sound reasonable, Mr. Hanley?
I think it's reasonable, yes. Because it does give the applicant opportunity to put forth his position through counsel.
And there, there's one other thing I want to bring up before we adjourn the work session. We can vote on that in a minute. You know, Mark, you know, the, the board has been, was, has been extremely lenient with Mr. Cale over time. I mean, there's been no enforcement of, of, you know, despite the fact that he moved hundreds and hundreds of cubic yards of soil onto the property. He, and he did substantial other work. And, you know, we, we gave him the 60 days, which, you know, we've, we've extended generously. The question really comes now, down to now, is, you know, the resolution that was signed gave Mr. Cale the opportunity to file a pool application within 60 days, and that's been withdrawn. So, there's really, there's no application, there's no reason at this point why the resolution, the stay, really is, is in, it should be in place any longer. So, my question is, we're not in the enforcement business in the planning board, but my question really comes at this point is, you know, should this, and I'm going to ask for opinions of other members, especially members who heard the initial application, is if this should really go to enforcement at this time, and it be, you know, really be handled separately from whatever we're doing this new application? Because there is no pool application before us, and that was really the only grounds for the stay. So, I would like to open it up to, to other members of the board for comment, particularly those who, you know, were present at the, the prior hearing.
I don't think you gave the full background to this. This, this is even bigger than that. Originally, slowly, he built out the property there, brought in 700 cubic feet of dirt into the property, little by little, he says, which comes out to about, believe it or not, something like 70 truckloads of dirt he brought in. He built a retaining wall on the back that wasn't approved by Mark. We didn't even know what happened until he took the drain lines from the house through that wall, and he came down the hill to water, and we actually flooded out a library. When Scott Fisher went and found out that the water was rolling down the hill, called Mark, they went up there, and they saw all this work was done without a permit. It was never an inspection done. So, that's when he was forced to actually put a permit in to try and get approval on the soil movement, to get an approval on the wall. And he got tired of waiting for that even. He decided he wanted to finish his landscaping, and he finished the wall, even though he had a stay during that period of time. So, he said he was doing us, what was the word I remember? He was doing us a favor by getting it done. Well, we did get him to fix the problem with the wall and stop the drain line from going through the wall, and we, we, we let the stay go on. But as far as I know, and I don't understand what you just said about the slow movement. You said 400 yards out and 900 yards in? Did you just say that?
I think Mr. Mr. Hanley read with the application. Is that, I think what Mr. Mr. Whitaker's relying on is the fact that the initial application said 100 and something, and this new applica, despite what was actually moved, and this new application says 400 and something. Am I correct on that?
We were going to remove all 700 cubic feet of the dirt that he brought in without any approval. That's what I thought. So, now it's down to 400. I'm confused. And then you've got 900 coming in, so you're actually going to bring in more than he had before. So, it's just confusing to me on that.
Yes. And I guess we'd have to get clarification on that before we would make a decision as to whether or not it's a substantially different application or not.
Yeah, I thought he was, what we agreed to originally for the pool application was he was going to remove all the new dirt that he put in there, all 700 cubic yards of dirt.
Now, the agreement was, is if he filed a pool application, and the pool application were granted by this board, he would be removing the soil, because he'd have to for the pool, and that it would be taking care of the problem of him importing the soil without, without approval. But that hasn't been done here. I'm not sure why. I thought we had left the door open for Mr. Cale to, you know, to come before this board on a pool application, but that's not what we have before us. Anybody else have any comments?
So, I do, Mr. Chairman. So, the idea of soil movement is to obviously prevent anybody from bringing contaminated soil onto the property, correct?
Uh, well, that's one of the reasons it comes before the board, and it's always a concern.
What triggers it is volume.
Right. But it's because of runoff, contamination?
Well, it's runoff, it's changing the grade, changing topography, making your, your property higher than your neighbor's property. It's more of a controlled, anything over 100 yards requires a planning board application.
Right.
And one of the problems on this application is, we, we had no, other than the testimony of Mr. Cale, which was suspect in many, many respects, we had nothing but his testimony as to where the soil had come from.
And where it went, correct? We don't even know where it went on the property?
Well, we knew it went in the backyard.
Okay. Is there any way, I guess, you know, that we could try and figure out a way, other than removing all of the soil, to, to come up with determining whether the soil is contaminated? I mean, I would assume contamination is the biggest concern here, right?
There were some tests done on the soil. I think there were three or four at various locations. But obviously, that, since not all the soil was tested, it certainly wasn't as, you know, it wasn't as clear as if all the soil had been removed and replaced with soil we knew was sourced appropriately. Anybody else before we go? We're going to have to take a vote on this. Mr. Boonstra?
I would just, getting back, Jim, to your, your comments about the fact that there is, the entire stay was predicated on a, an assertion that a pool application would appear in front of this board for the board to consider. And now, that has not happened. After all these months, actually, it did happen, not with this board, with the engineers' office, and that it was removed. So, as such, from that point, I, in my mind, anyway, there is an ongoing daily violation of the, the board's resolution. And as such, I think perhaps we should consider referring it to Mr. DeGenero's office for, for him to look at possible enforcement and, and any monetary ramifications that go along with that.
And, and that, that suggestion for the pool wasn't given by the board, right?
Correct.
That was, that was.
That was volunteered by the applicant.
Volunteered by the applicant.
Yes.
Right, okay.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, too. Anybody else have any comments? Okay, what I would propose initially is that we first, someone make a motion to deem this matter incomplete, so we're, we don't run afoul of any time, timeframes. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make a motion to deem it incomplete.
I'll second.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Saviida?
Yes.
Mr. Homichak?
Yeah.
Mr. Seitzma?
Yes.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
I have a question. So, I wasn't part of the vote for the first one. So, is it, am I in a position to vote on this?
On the new application? Yes, yes.
Okay, so, yes.
Mr. Bogdanovski?
Yes.
Mr. Purvin?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes. And secondly, to pick up on what I had said when Mr. Boonstra said, and what Mr. Homichak said, I would, I would, I would like this at least referred over to Mr. DeGenero's office for him to look at with regard to enforcement, because Mr. Cale is clearly in violation of the resolution that was passed. And with, you know, at his request, we, we made amendments to the initial resolution. And I think that can be done independently of whatever happens on this current application. So, I, I would ask someone to make that motion as well. And Mr. DeGenero, you're, I assume you're comfortable looking into this?
Sure, I can look it up.
Thank you. And you can report back to the board?
Yes.
Can I have a motion to refer this to Mr. DeGenero for enforcement with regard to violation of the June, I'm not sure the date, but the, the memorializing resolution from, I believe, June of 2020?
I'll make a motion as the chairman cites it.
Second.
Ms. Conlin?
Yes.
Mr. Saviida?
Yes.
Mr. Homichak?
Yes.
Mr. Seitzma?
Yes.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bogdanovski?
Yes.
Mr. Purvin?
Yes.
Chairman Fortunato?
Yes. Okay. That concludes everything we have on the, the business, I'm sorry, the work session. Unless there's anything else, can I have a motion to adjourn the work session?
Welcome to adjourn the work session?
Second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we went kind of late on that. We're going to go right into the, the business meeting. Let me just read these. So, the, the April 14, 2021 public meeting of the Whitechapel Planning Board is now in session. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act notice, this meeting appears on our annual schedule of meetings. Copy of said annual schedule has been posted on the bulletin board in Memorial Town Hall. Copy has been filed with the township clerk, the Record, the Ridgewood News, and the North Jersey Herald and News. All newspapers are generally circulation throughout the township of Whitechapel. At least 48 hours prior to this meeting, the agenda thereof was similarly posted, filed, and mailed to said newspapers. All applicants are hereby reminded that your application, if approved, may be subject to the terms, conditions, and payment of the Affordable Housing Development Fee requirement to the township. Information can be obtained from the Code of the Township of Whitechapel, Chapter 113-8, on the township's website, www.wheatchepel-nj.com. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Can, we rise for the, Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. Maureen, can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Conlin?
Here.
Mr. Saviida?
Here.
Mr. Homichak?
Here.
Mr. Seitzma?
Here.
Mr. Boonstra?
Here.
Mr. Purvin?
Here.
Mr. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Bogdanovski?
Here.
Chairman Fortunato?
Here. Oh, Maureen, I realize I, I forgot the payment resolution.
It's okay.
We can do it next time?
There was none, there, there was none in there. I had it on the agenda, but then I didn't get any vouchers to add to it, so you're open.
Okay, good. I didn't remember seeing one in there. Okay, so, just to recap, at the work session, the board approved the March 10, 2021 work session and regular business minutes. We approved the resolution of the township of Whitechapel Maple Lake Minor Subdivision, subject to some minor changes, which Mr. Hanley will incorporate in the final resolution. The Gary Cale matter was deemed incomplete, 225 Ann Houghton Avenue, and was referred to Mr. DeGenero for enforcement of the resolution, which Mr. Cale's in violation of. We're going to hear from Mr. Whitaker's attorney shortly. And then, the two matters were deemed complete, was the Mark DiLorenzo matter, which is 359 Ruett Farm Road, which is a, an application to move in excess of 100 cubic yards of soil and to install an in-ground pool, and the matter of Maggie Muller, 478 Ellis Place, which is a, seeking approval to install a six-foot-high solid fence on a corner lot with two front yards. So, before we get into those applications, Mr. Whitaker, if you would like to come forward and, and I want to give you the, the opportunity to, you know, make your pitch with regard to the, the application that's presently before us, and how, at least on its face, it's similar. I guess the, the question is how similar, and it is to the resolution to the matter that was denied. So, I wanted to give you the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Bruce Whitaker from the Farm and McDonald Whitaker, representing the applicant Gary Cale. Excuse my informality. I was not expecting to come tonight.
We were surprised to see you, actually.
Yeah. But I thought that trying to use the telephone and calling in was not the easiest way. I've tried that a couple of times at other meetings, and it's not, it's kind of cumbersome. So, with that said, let me just give you an overview of where we are at. The concept of completeness is for the board professionals to determine if an application meets the requirements for a checklist, for the engineering that's been submitted, et cetera. The idea of res judicata is, under case law, required to be presented to the full board to make a decision during the course of a public hearing. That's the first hurdle any applicant has to get over when you're talking about whether it is substantially different from the application before. So, that is something that I have to prove to you during the course of a public hearing, but it's not an aspect of completeness. It's just so that we understand. Complete, the res judicata issue, case law says it, it's in the Cox Book, says, the applicant has to prove that if it's raised as a question. So, that's something I'd be prepared to do at the public hearing. So, and I'm ready to do that. The overall concept, candidly, I don't know why the pool application was pulled. I did not pull it, it was pulled. As you know, I got involved in this matter halfway through the application. And at the time, I was advised that they wanted to put the pool in. I believe Mr. Cale retracted the pool when he saw there was variance relief, because as Mr. Mark DeGenero said, he had some apprehension that variance relief would ever be granted. Be that as it may. What the applicant wants to do now, I'll back up. The applicant originally proposed to remove some of the soil, about 150 cubic yards. And he took the position that the rest of the soil had been tested, and it was good, and it could stay there. could stay there. And the board rejected it all and denied him and said, no, because we don't know about those tests, we don't know where that soil came from. So at that point, he got denied.
Well, that wasn't the only reason for the denial.
No, but that, okay, but what the applicant is now proposing to do is to remove all the soil that he wants brought in. He needs a permit to move that soil out, the soil movement permit. So he wants to remove all that soil, which is about 420 cubic yards. The 970, I looked on the plans, includes the boulders, it includes the stone that was brought in, et cetera. But the pure-
I thought he brought in 700 cubic feet.
Yards.
Original thing. Yards, sorry, yards.
The application originally was for substantially less, but I think the testimony was that there was substantially more, somewhere in the 700, this range.
Total fill is 774. 168 in boulders, 19 cubic yards of clean, 170 cubic yards of lawn and topsoil, 420 of pure soil underneath.
Yeah, I must say-
I took it from the chart.
Well, Mr. Whitaker, I could just say, with regard to the testimony, because I have a very good memory of this, and, you know, if I'm wrong, the other members who heard it, I don't remember there being any delineation between, as the soil being between boulders or anything like that. It was simply a matter of soil.
It's on the plan that Mr. DeGeneres has, that's submitted now.
The current plan?
The current plan, yeah.
I think he's referring to the previous plan.
Oh, yeah, I'm referring to the previous better.
So, I mean, that's what, so what he's looking to do, and I know one thing the township wants, they want the soil that's there now out. So his approach is to take all the soil he brought in, out, replace it with certified tested soil, put in a new drainage system, and then restore the rock wall, under the guidance of Mr. DeGeneres, as far as inspections are concerned.
Sounds very similar to what we denied, but, you know, that's what, I understand what your client wants.
No, it isn't.
I'm just saying, we had it, we spent three or four meetings, if not more, hearing that matter, and again, I'm not making a decision, the board's not making a decision at this point, we wanted to give you an opportunity.
I appreciate that.
But, but, you know, you, I think the burden is on you to convince this board that this is a substantially-
Absolutely.
-different application.
Absolutely.
And as far as the completeness matter, it's really no harm, no foul, because if you want to come back next time, we can deem the matter complete and you can put it on, you can bring your professionals if you want, if you want to pay them to come. I thought it would be better for you if we made that decision initially, and that if we deemed it, that it would go forward, you can bring in your professionals. If we deemed it not going forward, then you wouldn't have paid your professionals to be here.
I need my professional to testify as to what the quantities are now versus what was there before.
Fair enough.
I couldn't do that.
Okay, fair enough.
So what I really would like, between now and say the next meeting, is if there are any comments about the plans themselves, engineering-wise, that needs to be addressed, recognizing we still have to determine whether there's a raised judicata prevails, I would want, if I can convince the board that this isn't under the guide, under the concept of raised judicata, I then wouldn't want to stop and say, oh, but the engineering plans are a problem. So if I could just get some comment back, that's all.
Sure, I think, I reviewed the plans already, I've looked at them. You know, certainly, I didn't go through the calculations, I have a difficult time understanding the tabulations and what was even including in boulders and stone and all that stuff, but I have no problem with the plans as they're submitted, provided there's no other changes. You know, I think they're-
I mean, the overview is, if he had put a pool in, would have been less soil being brought back in, still would be taking all that contaminated, what you consider contaminated soil out. He's still-
We'll call it suspect story.
Suspect, okay.
We are not, we are not saying it's contaminated, but it's highly suspect.
Agreed, okay. So that is still, in this plan, that's still what his approach is, and then put new soil in rather than a pool. That's the overview of the application.
You would agree that he's in violation of the resolution that we approved in June of 2020, would you not?
Absolutely.
Well, at least you had no argument on that.
I'm not arguing anything tonight, okay? I'm happy to be here and I'm happy to see you, didn't expect to be.
Okay, do you have anything further, Mr. Whitaker?
No.
So why don't we, why don't we list this to be, for completeness again at the next meeting, be prepared to bring your, whoever you want to put on, and we will make an initial determination. The board will hear as to whether we judge it to be a substantially different application. And I, unless we have something else major on for next time, do we have anything on yet, Marie?
No.
Okay, we should be able to have the hearing starting that evening as well.
Okay, I'm hopeful I can do it, I just have to watch my schedule. I had something else for this, this time in May, this night, but I'll try to work things out.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Whitaker.
All right, thank you for your time.
Have a good evening, thanks for coming out.
Good to see you.
You're welcome.
Good day.
Stay healthy.
Stay out of trouble.
I had that second shot today, that's what put me out.
Take care.
Okay. Okay, so moving along, the, is there, there's no one, I assume, here on the Cale matter, correct? That matter's adjourned until the May, what's the date of the May meeting, Marie, do you know?
It is May 12.
May 12. And there's nobody that's called in on that, correct?
Well, actually, you should announce.
Oh, all right, yes, let me read that. The time for public questions and comments is now open. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please dial 201-891-7000, extension 222. We will take calls in the order in which they are received. If the line is busy, please wait a moment and then try again. You'll be able to easily observe when a call has been completed as you are watching the meeting live on YouTube. Once you are on the line, we will ask that you mute the device on which you are watching the live stream as to minimize any interference with the audio. So we'll give 30 seconds. In the meantime, on the Mark DiLorenzo matter, you can come up and get ready to present on that. Marie, just let us know if someone calls in.
No.
No? Okay, so, on the Mark DiLorenzo matter, 359 Ruett Farm Road. How are you?
Good.
Hello, proceed.
You don't have to say anything, you can-
I think they have to be sworn in.
Yes.
Would you both raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your, both of you state your name and your address. Mark DiLorenzo, 359 Ruett Farm Road, Wykoff, New Jersey.
Kirsten Osterkorn from Amman and Osterkorn, 22 Madison Heights, Wykoff.
And Mr. Osterkorn, you're gonna be testifying as an engineer?
Yeah.
Okay. Can, we just have your credentials, please?
Sure, I graduated from Rutgers in 2006 with my engineering degree, I received my engineering degree in 2011. I've actually presented in front of the zoning board a lot, and I can't believe this is my first time in front of a planning board in Wykoff.
No, you've been here before.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, I've been in front of here, lots of other towns, license is still in good standing. I'm also gonna, no, wait, it's just engineering tonight, that's it.
I'm sorry, you're testifying-
I was gonna testify on something else, but I'm only engineering tonight.
Okay. And you mentioned that your license is in good standing, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The board will recognize Mrs. Osterkorn as an expert in the field of engineering. You can proceed. Are you gonna start, Mr. DiLorenzo?
Sure.
Yeah, why don't you just give a general overview of what you want to do and-
No problem.
Go ahead.
Right now, my backyard, it sits on a slope, it's very unusable, I have three small children, who I try to get out of the house as much as I can, they all play sports, it's very difficult to go outside and kick a soccer ball with the backyard sloping so much. We'd like to put a pool in, and with the pool going in, it's also the perfect time to give the kids an area of the yard that they can also play and be able to be outside more, and it would just make the backyard more usable and better.
Okay. And I can see you guys have plans there, right?
Yes.
Yes.
You want to bring us through those, Mrs. Osterkorn? Are you done, Mr. DiLorenzo?
Yeah, I'm done.
My plans are being 12-120 and revised through 3-121. They, the left side of the plan shows the existing conditions, planned for 359 Ruett Farm Road. I called it also demolition plan, just removing two trees and a portion of the small wall that's- And as you can see in the proposed, I was out with the DiLorenzos a couple of times looking at the best location for their pool, we were working with the step-back requirements of the 20-foot rear yard to the patio and the 15-foot side yard to the patio, and their goal was coming off of this patio at their back door, was where that elevation was, was to be the pool elevation and the patio. So when we started working through the design, we had a wall on the Easterly side, the left side of the plan, and then through other conversations, as Mr. DiLorenzo said, from being out there and meeting the kids and being out there, the usable space that they wanted to the yard, we thought to cut more onto the right side, and we did a tiered wall system. All of the other pool plans in town that I've done, I guess I never triggered the 100 yards before because it was part of a pool. So when I submitted the plan and Mr. DeGeneres was like, oh, you're gonna try to go into a planning board, this was all new to me for this type of application. The goal ultimately is to level the yard, we are aware that the wall's over two feet. The left side wall, I believe the max height we did for all the walls was four feet, which is outside of Wykoff other standards, as you do structural design over four feet. I was aware that Wykoff, it is two feet, but I still wanted to keep the walls on the smaller side. So the left side wall has a max height of four feet, and then the tiered walls on the right side are two to three feet, so they're not large walls, they plan on landscaping. We did have the landscaping required to close out this buffer in the rear and landscape around the equipment. I know from speaking with Mr. DiLorenzo, they have other ideas of beautifying their yard even more during construction at that point. We are installing a seepage pit, it's gonna handle all the drainage coming off, it's interior to the yard, and we will have soil erosion measures in place. We do have to go to Burton County Soil Conservation District as we're disturbing over 5,000 square feet, so we will be able to satisfy their requirements for silt fence and soil disturbance. And ultimately, the design that we've come up with, with the drainage and the impacts of grading, won't have any negative impact to the neighbors. The slight change in the grading is actually gonna level the property more, we're gonna take stuff interior to the site as opposed to what happened with the gradual slope now that goes to the property to the east.
And there's no variances required in connection with this application, correct?
No, all setbacks for the cabana, the pool equipment, and the pool and patio around the pool will meet the 20-foot rear yard and 15-foot side yard requirement.
And you're prepared to give the specifications that Mr. DeGeneres would require with regard to the retaining wall?
Absolutely. I would, if approved tonight, during the process to the next meeting, we plan to submit to Burton County Soil Conservation, and I'll get the structural drawings going to submit so prior, so when they go to submit for building permit, Mr. DeGeneres will have Burton County approval, my retaining wall designs.
Is that, is that the substance of your testimony? Anything further?
Also, this is our excessive building coverage, we're staying under the 5% allowed as well. The pool and the cabana count to that, and we are under the allow rule for that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right, that's solid PVC pipe connecting yardlets.
Okay, that's what I thought it was.
Yeah, and it goes to the seepage pit. Okay, yeah, okay, now it goes to the seepage pit.
Yeah, the question is with the broken lines on there?
Yeah.
Broken lines on there?
They're little yard inlets with solid PVC piping connecting. And actually, we'll probably have to install some more when I'm looking at it.
And that's all gonna slope into that seepage pit?
Yep.
There's no seepage pit in the back now?
No.
Okay, so this will be new?
Yep.
So Mr. DeGeneres, then, this would improve any drainage issues on the property, I would assume?
Yes.
Is that your testimony too, Mrs. Osterkorn?
Yes. And we provide the statement on the plans, the drain certification of no adverse impact and zero increase in stormwater runoff, and as part of the conclusion of the project, I'd be issuing an as-built-in statement to Mr. DeGeneres as well, stating the same.
I have a question with regard to the drainage. Where do roof leaders go now for the house?
I did look at that, because I have hearing, you might ask that. A lot of them do come out and come to this front area, but I didn't think with the area to be able to connect and get that because of the proximity to the property line, I didn't actually think you'd want it in the front.
No, I'm just wondering, because a lot of times, with these older developments, the homes don't have drywells picking up the roof leaders, and a nice, easy way to compensate for collecting stormwater runoff that's proposed to be generated by a pool and patio and cabana is to pick up the equivalent roof area.
Right.
And it's easy to disconnect it, and you're not having all these little drains all around the patio.
When I looked at, in the front here, there's a tree and a landscape bed, and what I believe is the roof leaders actually come and discharge into this front yard.
Right.
But because this was such a lower grade, I don't know, I looked at it, but where this area that would be available for it, I actually didn't think you'd like it, but it's, we could look into it further. I had just done some inspections for it because I get that, too, and where these ones all come, I know are into this area versus then introducing all of this that would just then go out the back. I thought you might like that better.
Yeah, well, it's just a suggestion that, you know, it's one, both achieve the same thing.
Yeah.
It's like a skinny cat, so sometimes when you don't have drywells picking up roof leaders, it's easier just to grab a drywall, a roof leader, put it into a drywall, and put all these, you know, drains around the yard and try to pitch them properly. So it's just a suggestion, I don't have a preference one way or another, that's up to you.
If when they have the contractor out there starting, if we wanted to move the teams, what would you want to say?
If you wanted to change it at that point, you could just let me know and submit-
And show that the area-
Submit the revised counts.
Okay.
And show me where you're gonna put it, and I would have no problem with that.
Okay.
I would just also just make another suggestion for your consideration on when you're doing these drywells.
Yeah.
With these overflow grates. There's also other ways to do overflows without putting, saddling the homeowner with a metal industrial-looking grate in the backyard, by just putting a PVC pipe off the top of the tank with a perforated small drain inlet, so when the tank fills up, it'll overflow just the same.
But to through the smaller-
Through the thing, along the side someplace away from, you know, if you have kids playing in the backyard, you got this manhole basically in the backyard, it's one unsightly and-
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Osterkorn, I just have a question, the area along the back line of the property, is that a retaining wall now?
That's on the neighbor, it's like a, it's like a small boulder wall.
Yeah, it's a boulder wall that separates the two properties, whenever they built the place, it runs the length of-
Those old farm walls.
Okay. So the level of your property in the back and your neighbors is about the same?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are existing evergreens along the back property wall?
Yes, and there's just a gap, actually, in this gap where I'm proposing to plant new evergreens, there's just like brush there, so it's not as much of the buffer that you would want.
Mr. Seitzma, do you have any que, I'm sorry, just before we get off of Mr. Seitzma, do you have any comments on the proposed landscaping?
No, they're just filling in the open areas that some of them need.
I'm sorry, I think I interrupted somebody.
Sewer, no septic?
Sewer, yeah.
Anybody else?
Just a quick question, like the raised patio, less than two feet height, you showed the pool fence coming from the right-hand property line over to that wall. Is that enough height there of that wall to serve as a, as a, basically a fence?
The existing wall?
Yeah, right. It seems to be like that fence should go even with the back of the house.
Well, it ties into the back rear of the house and that area is a little.
It's going on the right hand side.
Oh, this side, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have it tying into the front, the back of the house over here.
Right now, it looks like it ties into the wall.
Oh, that's the limited disturbance line. That's the limited disturbance line. The fencing is over here.
Oh, it is over there?
Yes, I have a different dash line.
Yeah, I can't see it on the corner.
Yeah, sorry, I got that. That's just the limited disturbance that shows we're over the 10,000 square feet.
Okay. Any questions, Rudy? No, I'm fine. Okay. All right, thank you. Anything further? Yes. I'm going to open it up to the Oriens. Morions, do I have to read this every time? Are you saying I should, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So on the DiLorenzo matter, which is 359 Ruud Farm Road, the time for public questions and comments is now open. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please dial 201-891-7000, extension 222. We will take calls in order in which they are received. If the line is busy, please wait a moment and then try again. You will be able to easily observe when a call has been completed as you are watching the meeting live on YouTube. Once you are on the line, we will ask that you mute the device on which you are watching the live stream as to minimize any interference with the audio. So we'll give it 30 or 45 seconds and just let us know if anybody calls in. Okay, we're done hearing from the public. I'll close the, excuse me, the public comments. Okay, members of the board, anybody have any comments on this? Seems pretty straightforward to me. Be a nice improvement to the property, level it out for the kids. Anybody else? All right, if nobody has any objection, would somebody be kind enough to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
359 Ruud Farm Road, block 2429, block 31.
I'll second that.
We got Frank over here, sit a second. He beat you.
Second for the first.
Oh, that upset Mike.
That, that, yeah.
Take his chair.
Mr. Crowman, yes. Mr. Sedida?
Yes.
Mr. Homichak?
Yes.
Mr. Stevek?
Yes.
Mr. Bluestock?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Van Ance, yes. Mr. Burden?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the second matter we have on this evening is the Maggie Mueller matter. 478 Ellis Place, applicant seeking to approve the install six-foot-high fence, solid fence on the corner lot with two front yards. Would you, hi, hi, Ms. Mueller, correct?
I'm Mueller.
Mueller, I'm sorry. Okay. Can you be sworn, please?
Yes. Raise your right hand. You swear to swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
State your name and address, please.
Maggie Mueller, 478 Ellis Avenue, I'm sorry, Ellis Place in Whitecroft, New Jersey.
How are you, Ms. Mueller?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Thanks for coming tonight. Can you just bring us, you know, you submitted the paperwork we're generally familiar with. Just give us an overview, what are you looking to do?
Sure. Just recently moved to town back in August, September timeframe. And I've got this great property, but it is a corner lot. So I have two front yards. I've got two small children, a six-year-old daughter and a three-year-old son. And so I am asking for a variance or a request to put in a fence. Technically, I guess it's my second front yard, but I'm looking to fence in the backyard for privacy and safety.
Okay. Mark, just for clarification, the application is only to, as to, it's only before the board because of the James Way side, correct? Because the fence is set back behind the front of the house on the Ellis side?
The, the, correct.
Yeah.
The fence is in the front yard of James Way.
Okay.
Front yard number two.
Right. Okay. And I know you've submitted two options with regard to the fence. You have a fully solid one and then you have one with some lattice work on the top. Do you have a, do you have a preference?
So up against my neighbor's property, there already is a solid white, six-foot-high PVC fence. So I'm trying to match it.
Your neighbor on what side?
Not on James Way, on the other side.
Okay, okay.
So I already have one high white fence on one side. So I'd like to try to match that. I put the other options in there. I'm not 100% opposed to them. It's just in my previous property, I did have lattice at the top and I could just say it's challenging to keep it clean. It gets dirty and it looks dirty. It's a lot easier to power wash a six-foot-high white fence than it is all the lattice at the top, so.
You know, when I looked at the property, you know, Mark, the question I had was the plants that are there, they're beautiful now. They're in, I don't know what they're called. They're yellow.
Forsythia.
Forsythia, they're in yellow bloom now. So during the wintertime though, those have no, they have no leaves, right? I guess.
Correct, no leaves.
Okay. So the screening, normally we require some kind of evergreen screening, do we not?
Yeah.
And I guess in the, in the wintertime, there wouldn't be really any effective screening over there. That was my only, my only question on it. Do you have any opinion on that, Mr. Seitzman?
Well, I mean, the code is that it should be screened halfway up with an evergreen, right? Half the height of the fence. Is that what the?
It's supposed to be evergreen, Mark? Is that in the code? Is it evergreen? So, Ms. Mueller, the code says that it's, you have plants in front of that now, but those aren't evergreens. So in the wintertime, there's no leaves on it, you see. And the reason why the ordinance requires evergreens is so there's some blockage of the fence. You don't have a completely, you know, white wall there. So that was the only reservation I had, is that, you know, in the winter, there's nobody across the street though. It's Route 208. So there are no neighbors across the street looking at it.
I recall the home to the east of your home on the corner of, I believe it's Victor, had a similar situation to yours a number of years ago when the fence was put up. And my recollection is that because a six-foot solid fence is not permitted in a front yard, either the primary or the secondary front yard. But yet there's a need there because of 208 and there are no neighbors to the south there. But we, the homeowner in that instance agreed to actually a lattice-type applique for the top. I think it was one foot of the fence, which is what exists now. We also talked to them about an off-white color because it is less stark, especially, I mean, that's a pretty nice robust forsythia you have there now.
Right.
But as Chairman said, when, in the winter months, that all disappears. And rather just have a stark white fence, an off-white is less stark, for lack of a better word. So I recall that discussion when the homeowner, in your backyard really, was in front of this board for exactly the same purpose you are.
Right.
And I understand the proximity to 208 and I understand there are no other neighbors on, that face that exposure of your house. But nevertheless, if there's anything we can do to tone it down, we'd like to try to do that.
Okay.
So at this point, that's my two cents.
I mean, do you have any, because I actually don't live far from there. You're actually my neighbor, block away. So I drive by the fence, your neighbor's fence that Mr. Boonster is referring to. And do you have any, are you familiar with that fence?
I am, yeah.
Do you have any objection to something similar? I personally think it looks better and generally when the board has discussed these types of things, you're in a little different situation because you don't have anybody looking directly on you. But I am in agreement with Mr. Boonster with regard to the look of a fence like that with lattice work and possibly an off-white color. Do you have any objection to that?
No, just, I was really trying to just, I mean, when I look at my backyard now, I see everyone has two different types of fences in their yard. They really do. The ones on James Way are a one-way. The one in the back is a different way. I was really trying to keep it looking nice when you look at my backyard as opposed to having a different fence here. And then I don't even know what would go in the back.
Consistency.
A white privacy fence and then another white privacy fence over here. I was trying to keep it looking.
Uniform.
Uniform, yeah. That would be my only concern.
It would only be the exposure in front yard number two where such a fence is not permitted anyway.
Along James Way.
Along James Way, yeah.
You know, which you could put, there wouldn't be any objection if you put in whatever kind of fence you want anywhere other than along James Way. That's the one we're talking about.
So that would just be that one side that would just be.
I mean, you could do, you could do it all uniform, but we would only be commenting on the part you could see from the road necessarily, right?
I didn't take note in my mind. What color is your house?
My house is a gray with black.
I think what you're saying is you have a white fence already on one side.
Right.
You just have a white fence on one side and a gray fence on the other side or a brown fence on the other side.
Off-white.
Or off-white.
Off-white.
I think that's kind of what you're opposed to.
Right.
Did they make this fence in a gray? I don't even know. They do. Do they? Well, that might be, then at least that, that would.
You still have two different colors.
Well, but at least one color matches the house. You don't have three different colors. You don't have gray, tan and white.
Yeah, I mean, I personally, the color to me is really not as important, although I do see your point, Mr. Boonster. I do think that the lattice-type fence is much more attractive as opposed to.
Well, it's just, I just, these white fences, and I keep going to the corner of Newtown and Cedar Hill, that stark, stark white fence right in our front yard is just, that's why with the neighbor, Ms. Mueller's east, we got away from the white.
Well, we could grant it and in the resolution, give her a choice of a beige or a gray.
Yeah, anything, anything with stark white with a lattice or a, the one. Or like the even, you know, the option you showed us is not exactly a lattice. It's like, it's like a.
Picket.
The wrongs at the top?
Yeah, I mean, that's fine too.
The bottom portion of that is white though.
Yeah, I know that. I'm not, I'm talking about the design of the top.
Okay, okay.
That'd be fine as well.
But the bottom part needs to be a, an off-white or a gray?
Something off-white, yeah. I think.
Yeah, we give you an option, an earth tone or a gray, you know, whatever you decided you wanted to do.
Yeah.
Could another option be if she wanted white to keep the uniformity, putting bushes that are evergreens around the bottom half of it, could we give that alternative as well? Because I do understand what you're saying with regard to having all these different colors and types of fence. Looks disjointed.
Yeah, it does.
I don't know, I just.
I'd hate to see you pull all those plants out of there, but do you have that, I guess forsythias, you guys know more about them than me. But, I mean, they're pretty plants.
Just for the record, are you planning to remove those forsythias?
No, I had not planned on removing.
Yeah, I didn't think so based on what you submitted, right?
Stay on the record though, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I appreciate the options. If you could put that one extra option in there, I could definitely talk to, you know, some landscapers and cost that out to see what that would be. Again, I would love for it to all look the same, but I understand if that is an eyesore in the neighborhood, the stark white.
I mean, you may be believing, I don't know, but maybe you could get white on the inside and it could be a different color on the outside. I don't know if that's available or not, but I'm just throwing it out there. The only concern that we have is what would show to the outside, of course, so.
Right. And so you're saying that in my neighborhood, there are a lot of white fences. There are a handful of white fences on corner properties, but they all have the green bushes in front of them, I'm assuming?
I'm not familiar with, I was just looking at the one.
They're supposed to.
Not necessarily, only if they're on the front yard.
Right, the corners, right, the corners, yeah. So I have been looking at a couple of them and there, I think there's about three that have white fences. The other one is the one right behind me, which is the off-white.
And that may have been before. I don't know how long the ordinance has been in effect, but, you know, it's possible it predated the ordinance or, so I can tell you as long as I've been on the board that, you know, we generally try to avoid stark white, straight white fence, you know.
Solid.
Solid white fence, yeah. So we're not picking on you.
No, I understand, I understand.
So is that, is that existing, I guess it's six feet fence?
Yes.
So maybe you could perhaps change that. I don't know what your neighbor has, but maybe you can change that to be in the front of the rest.
Yeah.
Because I totally empathize with you with the difference in color. That might be not as expensive as putting a rubbery around, you know, maybe take out that six foot and maybe.
Replace it all, yeah. I was trying to save money by not replacing that fence. But, yeah, I guess I'll have to, you know, price it out and see.
As a contrast to this, you know, we, we've approved a number of fences in front yard number two. Coming to mind recently, we had one on West Shore Drive in Whitecroft Ave. We had one on the corner of Whitecroft Ave and Fern. And we wouldn't approve a solid fence because there are neighbors across the street. So, you know, the ordinance calls for, we also had one on the corner of, recently on the corner of Franklin and Lawns. I mean, the ordinance permits an open fence, which is like half fence and then half open air. And then, you know, and that's what we approved. If it's a safety issue for children, we were disposed to give the six-feet height, but not the solid fence. Where there are neighbors across the street or something like that, because that's what the ordinance calls for. The ordinance calls for, what is it, a four or five-foot fence, I think, right, Mark?
Four.
Four-foot, yeah. But which will extend to six-foot. If there are small children, it's a safety issue.
Right.
But we don't deviate from the solid fence where it's in, where there are neighbors on the other side. Now, you've got 208 on the other side and that in part is part of the problem while you're looking for a fence, so we understand that.
Right.
So I think just to, just to mute it down from the solid white is not a reasonable request, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable, especially based on their applications.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the board's inclined to grant your request, provided you'd be willing to do some kind of open lattice work or picket along the top and a color, an earth tone or a gray tone.
Okay.
Would you be agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Are you suggesting two-tone fence, Scotty?
No, no, no. I'm suggesting some open work along the top and that she would have her choice as to what color she wanted to do other than a straight white.
But if she wanted to put white across the backyard, that, this is only in the setback, or in the front yard.
No, I get it, but what I'm saying is, you know, some of these fences come with white posts and beige panels and white lattice. It looks awful.
Yeah, you could do a white panel and gray lattice.
Okay.
And you could get it that way.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, so what you're saying is we should, we should limit the options?
I'm saying, as long as you're not saying, I understood the lower panel is one color and the upper panel another color. And then, you know, I think that personally, I think that looks putrid.
That's what you really think, yeah.
Is that a zoning issue? I think if it's going to be one color, it's good.
Yeah, that's fine.
If it's multiple colors, I think it looks awful.
A solid, one solid color other than white. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to clarify.
Either a beige or a gray.
Like if I did the bottom gray and then the white lattice at the top, that's acceptable. Does the white, does the lattice at the top have to be gray too?
No, I think that, I think that would be okay.
Yeah.
What I think is awful looking is white posts with beige panels.
Oh, beige panels, yeah, okay, okay.
What about pink posts with gray on top and green?
What about black?
In fact, I think the one your neighbor has may have white, it's beige, but does it have white lattice work go on?
They do have white lattice at the top.
Yeah, I think it does, yeah.
Just along James Way though.
Yeah.
Then they have a different one in the back.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I think if the solid panels were beige or gray and the white applique on top were white, I don't think that would.
Okay.
I have a question. We've talked about evergreens. Is that going to be part of the reservation?
I think we, at least my understanding is we wouldn't make that a requirement, just that you'd have to keep some screening there, right? I mean, in other words, I think it'd be an issue if there was, she removed those completely at some point, right? We can incorporate that in so that there's.
Well, I want to get a clarification because she has plants there now, but leaves.
Well, no, we discussed that. We weren't proposing any new.
So we're not proposing that she puts evergreens in front?
No, she was going to bring it right up to the existing forsythias. Is that correct?
She's going to keep the existing plants there.
Why, is there, is there a distance she should maintain away from those forsythias to not compromise their health? Are they pretty hardy?
No, they're hardy. They'll die on the fence side, but they'll flourish on the road side.
Okay, okay.
And just to, here again to be consistent, I believe the neighbor that I keep referring to, to east, we did not require plantings on the.
There's no planting.
There are no plantings, so I don't see required plantings here. Installment of new plantings.
Right, understandable, okay.
If you want to put some in, fine, but I don't think we'll make it a requirement.
Okay.
Just to answer Kevin's question.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so just so it would be clear, the motion would be to approve a six-foot fence with some type of open lattice or a picket along the top in a color, either in a beige. with some type of open lattice or a picket along the top, in a color, either in a, in a, in a beige color or a gray color of the applicant's choice?
On?
On, on, on the.
James Way.
Facing the James Way side. Did I cover everything?
Well, in, in, in the, in the front yard, now, that includes that little section that goes towards the house.
That's the, that's the.
It's not gonna move two different.
No, that's the house.
So it would have to go by the driveway, and then down James Way?
Do you like cedar?
Do I, oh, I don't really know a lot about fences.
Cedar's wood, natural wood.
Yeah.
That's a nice, I mean, it's nice.
Is it more expensive?
Probably.
Oh.
It's expensive, yeah.
It's a big property.
Plastic is expensive now, everything went through the roof, so.
I know, I know, it's, it's, it's a lot, defensively.
You gotta worry about, I know by me, I have a neighbor that had a white vinyl fence, and then squirrels ate the vinyl.
Oh, my.
Chewed through the posts, so just, just warn him, that does happen.
Everything's crazy priced, you feel lucky you can get fence, actually, now. I've heard there's like backlogs, truly unable to fence, it's weeks. Weeks of fence.
Twelve weeks.
Another story. Okay, so can we have a motion to approve, based on what was said, and in, in all areas that constitute a front yard along James Way, on the outside?
I'll make a motion to approve the application of Maggie Mueller, four seventy-eight Ellis Place, for a fence in the, in the front yard number two, based on testimony.
I'll second that.
Mr. Conlin, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sabida?
Yes.
Mr. Homiechak?
Yes.
Mr. Seatsma?
Yes.
Mr. Boonstra?
Yes.
Mr. Furbin?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Bobanski, yes. Chairman Fortunato?
Yes. Okay, I gotta open it up to public comment. The time for public questions and comments is now open. If you wish to ask a question or make a comment, please dial 201-891-7000, extension 222. We will take calls in order in which they are received. If the line is busy, please wait a moment, then try again. You'll be able to easily observe when a call has been completed, as you are watching the meeting live on YouTube. Once you're on the line, we will ask you to mute the device on which you are watching the live stream, as to minimize any interference with the audio. We're just gonna wait thirty seconds, and then Ms. Mueller, what we'll do is, by the next meeting, the resolution should be ready and signed, but you can start to make preparations in advance.
You can order the fence, I'm sure.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So just give a moment, and then.
I'm clocking it.
Okay.
I can't believe I had two numbers here.
So, uh.
You have one?
I have two.
You're good.
He's gonna have to amend.
It has to be amended, so you can't sign it.
Yeah. Okay, no one having, no, no one called incorrect, Maureen? Okay, so we're gonna close the public session, and you're all set, Ms. Mueller, thank you.
Thank you.
And can I have a motion? Motion to adjourn?
Hold on, that can't. So, um, I, this is a program, it's teething up during the reception, but so entrenched in the conversation. There was an application in front of this board a year and a half ago, for a property over on Everett Avenue, corner of Everett and Highland, known as 244 Everett. And the applicant received approval with a submitted landscape plan, and they requested a CO. I had done my inspection, landscape plan wasn't complete to the letter of plan, substantially missing seven shade trees, and probably fifteen arborvitae. And I, I recommended a temporary CO be issued with a posting of a bond for $4,500, so we can get this resolved. Glenn Seatsma and I met with the owner, applicant, landscaper, this week, Tuesday, walked the site, and the issue there becomes that what the landscape plan proposed seems to overcrowd the site. So it's kind of overplanting the site. In specifics, the seven, there were seven October Glory red maples to be planted, two in the front, four along the side in the right-of-way of Highland Avenue, and one in the parking lot area off on the property. And looking at it, you know, I, I agree that there's a lot of plants there. We came up with an idea of potentially altering that with some recommendations, but I wanted to hear from the board if it's something that we can talk about here, or do we need to have the applicant come back and, and file an application for an amendment to this landscape plan?
Just to give context to this, this was the building behind Aldo's on the corner of Everett and Highland, that we approved the renovation to an older home that was there. And the applicant came in and testified that the basement was crumbling, so we approved complete removal of the building, and starting from basement up. That's the building we're talking about here, am I correct, Mark?
Yes.
It's the really beautiful one, the white one.
That's the building we're talking about.
Newly constructed one, on the corner.
It's gray.
Okay.
That's all we're talking about.
Gray and black.
Yes.
So. So, um, did you mention the sign, I'm sorry?
I did not.
Okay, okay. Well, having discussed this with you before, Mark, there's possibly, the applicant is possibly seeking to put a ground sign, is that correct?
That's what, that's what he had, I think he was under the impression that he had the approval for it already, but it wasn't on the site.
No, that was not there.
I mean, my suggestion would be, is it, if he is gonna put a ground sign, and he's gonna come back before the board, that for that, that he would bring an amended plan for the landscaping at the same time? If he's not gonna do that, I, I would feel comfortable if the other board members, you'd leave it within your discretion to make field changes, if you feel they're comfortable.
For landscaping.
Yeah. Does anybody have an issue with that? You comfortable doing that, Mark?
So, we always like to have more plants, right? We always like to add trees, and people are taking trees down. Took some trees down in the right-of-way.
Right.
Just didn't work on this, it's, it's too crowded.
Okay.
So, we have a nice wide strip of lawn on Highland Avenue, and to stay consistent with the doctor's office, sits on the corner of, I guess, Madison and Highland, right?
Yeah.
So, the shade tree should go in that aisle. There's plenty, it's plenty wide to put the shade trees there. And that's really all he needs as far as the shade trees, there's no room in the front for shade trees.
Yeah, I agree.
There's a big, there's a big maple on the left-hand side of the house now, and it would be impacted by that. There's actually a three-foot strip in the back parking lot that called for green giant arborvitae, and we can't put three. And it's just a, it's parking lot to parking lot. So, he's just got some nice ornamental grasses in there, which, you know, they grow to four feet high, and the snow is piled, you know, eight feet high there in the winter, between both parking lots are pushing their snow up. So the arborvitae would have been crushed anyway, so. Sometimes, sometimes it just doesn't work.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine, that's fine. And any, I, any changes to the landscaping, you and Mark can handle as a field change. But if there's a sign involved, they might not just put it all together and come in and get it all approved.
Yeah, I don't know what the timeline for signing is, but he's got an expiration on his temporary CO of May, of the end of, end of this month. So, I'm sure he'd like to get his money back, if, if he can provide the landscaping, completes everything, you know. So, I, I don't know that the timing is gonna work for him.
Okay.
If he wants to put a ground sign in, he'll find himself here again.
Yeah, okay. That's fine, and that's okay, too. Is this something that we, we need to vote on, or we can just give you direction?
I don't think you need to vote on it, because there's nothing really in front of you, it's just, I'm, I'm asking you what, what direction you want. Do you want the applicant to come back? I know sometimes the, the boards want jurisdiction on certain issues.
I'm comfortable with Mr. Seatsma, he's in the, in the business, looked at it, yeah, I mean, again, I think, I agree with Rudy, if he's gonna come with a, with, with a sign application, have him bring everything, but otherwise, I, I have no problem, based on whatever you guys recommend. Anybody else have any problem with that?
Why don't we put a motion on? I'll make a motion, to authorize engineering consultation with, with Member of the Shade Tree Commission to, to, to make adjustments to the landscape plan I submitted, based on need.
As a field change.
A second.
Okay. Hold on, Rudy and George, a motion for field, field change on the landscape plan.